Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the September 23rd, 2025, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We will start with introducing the board and staff members present. I am Teresa Flynn.
Beth Cassavant.
Carlos Garcia.
Michelle Conlon.
Greg Richards.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Keith Waldinger, Assistant Town Manager for Operations.
Nick Haas, Benefits Coordinator.
The first item on our agenda is to approve the bill's payrolls and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item number two is to review an act to approve the minutes of the September 9th, 2025, meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain as I was absent. Item number three is announcements and reports. Do any board members have any announcements this evening?
One. I just want to remind the community that the Spirit of Shrewsbury is this weekend. September 27th, Saturday, Expo at Oak Middle School. Begins at 10 o'clock and runs through 3 o'clock. Lots of great vendors and community groups there. And then the parade is at 1:00 PM on Sunday, and that begins at the Old Beale School and goes through town and ends at the Oak Middle School. So, thank you to everyone who is on the organizing committee. I know it's a huge undertaking and looking forward to participating. We have many town booths that day.
Great, thank you. Any others? The 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee asked me to announce that they are holding a community forum on Tuesday, September 30th. At 7:00 PM, in this room, the committee will share what has been accomplished and planning for the tricentennial and encourage the community to get involved. And while the meeting is here in this room, there are also options to participate virtually, so you can find more information on their website if you are interested. There's nothing else. Item number four on our agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, board members. A couple of updates from me this evening. First, I want to talk a little bit about some roadway restoration work that's going to be occurring throughout the community. The town requires utility companies, including Eversource, who disturb our roadways, to restore conditions to their pre-work conditions whenever possible. And that often takes a couple seasonal cycles, so that any trench work that they did can settle out and we can get the best repair possible before they make their final improvements. So, following some gas main installation upgrades that have occurred over the last few years, there's going to be some work throughout the community this fall, actually starting tomorrow. So, there'll be milling work on sections of Amberly Lane, Hunter Circle, Hutchins Street, Crescent Street, and Fisk Street. And then, the following day, Thursday, September 25th, sections of Oak Street, Lady Slipper Drive, and Boston Drive. And then, the paving work on those roads will occur on Monday, September 29th, and Tuesday, September 30th. We don't have the exact sequence of the roads which they're going to pave, but it will occur over those two days. And we'll provide additional updates to residents directly through the Code RED system. So, we'll be targeting those areas, but we wanted all residents to know there'll be heavy construction in those areas over the course of the next few days. And we'll be partnering with them to, you know, make the comprehensive improvements to the road and make sure the roadway condition is what it was before they started their work. And then, I also wanted to provide a board an update on the work that we're doing and considering making some adjustments to the overlay districts along Route 9 and Route 20. We had a conversation with regards to the special town meeting warrant at your last meeting, and we committed to further investigation up until and through this meeting. So, as we've worked with council and the planning department, it seems like if we want to pursue something as expeditiously as possible, that we'll want to pursue the moratorium approach. We do not propose that it be included on your warrant that you're considering this evening, so we don't have it on there. But we are committed to laying out a schedule to do it as quickly as possible. We can definitely do it before the end of the calendar year if we call another special town meeting, but we'll work with the board on scheduling it. Right now, we're going through the analysis of the challenges that we're facing within the corridor to make sure that they can substantiate a change that would be what's appropriate for implementing a moratorium on our existing zoning bylaws for a defined amount of time, which will give us time to look at those challenges, overcome them, and make comprehensive recommendations that, you know, kind of, we only have to actually make once rather than making changes and, you know, having to immediately follow up and make further adjustments if we do this under kind of a hurried approach. So, we're moving as fast as we can on the moratorium process. The last two weeks have provided a lot of information that I feel comfortable that we'll be able to make a recommendation to you, that we can do something before the end of the calendar year.
Kevin, if anyone were to have a question as to why you wouldn't try to consolidate, which, if we're not ready for this particular topic, for the scheduled special town meeting, why we wouldn't necessarily, like, why we wouldn't delay?
Sure. Yeah, the biggest reason that we can't delay the special town meeting for a significant amount of time to include it all together is that we have to set the tax rate within the month of November in accordance with state regulations for the Department of Revenue. So, that is a process that obviously comes before this board, and we're targeting your October 28th meeting for that, which then gives the assessor enough time to complete all the required forms and submit it to DOR in early November and get our tax rate set. So, that's the number one driver. That's why, although it was a little later than last year, it was a little later last year than most years, we always try to land the special town meeting within the third week of October, so we can comply with that regulation.
I know there's another warrant article regarding the high school feasibility study. What is the ti- does that have any?
So, it does.
I know we have to make a decision, but is that before the end of the year?
Right. It is, yeah. Thanks for that reminder. So, we're in a 270-day process that expires the end of November. It started the beginning of April, so we do have to take action on that to be within compliance with the MSBA process.
Okay. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31. We do have one resident that has asked to speak, Brian Costello. If you wouldn't mind, just, I know I just said your name, but if you could state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Hey, everybody. I'm Brian Costello, 398 Walnut Street, Precinct 9. A few weeks ago, I notified the Select Board and the Town Manager that the town had violated the Town Manager Act when they appointed a school committee member to the Form of Government Committee. It was acknowledged, and Mr. Mizikar did get back to me and say through Town Council that that was actually a violation of the Town Manager Act. I do want to also thank Mr. Mizikar, because I did also say that there were other folks that were ineligible for certain committees, and he did send me a note explaining ex officio appointments and sent me the relevant law, so thank you for that. But I was correct on the primary reason I sent a note. I wanted to address that, because first, I want to make it clear, it's not about the people that were chosen. As a matter of fact, I think I voted for the school committee member that was actually picked on the committee. What it's about is really holding everybody accountable to what we do as a town, our own bylaws and our own laws. I think it's kind of amusing that, you know, in picking a Form of Government Committee, the Form of Government made a mistake and didn't understand what we actually have for some bylaws, but it's a mistake, right? It happens. I think that there are four ways we can go forward with this when I was thinking about how we approach solving the problem of a person that was chosen and that was ineligible. You know, first, we could kind of go back in time, right? We could say, well, let's just start over, let's create a new committee. I think that's unwise. I think it's a kind of a little unethical, and I think it goes back in time. You kind of knew what you were doing when we were setting up the committee. You picked how the committee was going to be set up. You put an ex officio member on a committee, and it is what it is, right? You knew what you were doing, you knew the type of people that were going to be on the committee. I think you can also look at everybody that's currently, didn't get on the committee, and say, well, we'll just do a vote for them. I don't have necessarily a huge problem with that, but I'd say that you are creating a new voting system when you already voted, right? You already created a system, you already voted, now you're kind of creating something else. You could throw the whole thing out and just vote on everybody new. Seems like kind of a waste of time to me. You already went through the process. Or you could go down the path and say, look, we voted on the people that were going to be on the committee, one was ineligible, there was a vote, the next person in line should get the committee membership. That is me, by the way, I want to be perfectly clear. And I do think I'm qualified for the position. I've been very active in town politics, especially recently. I think I've gotten residents very much involved in the process. And when we think about what the Form of Government Committee is, we don't know the answer to this question. We have to get resident input. We have to get people that really understand, what do they really want? What we know, and this was from conversations, I think, Beth, you remember having a conversation with Mr. Saman? Am I blanking on?
Samia.
The former, yeah, thank Mrs. Samia. You know, previously, and we brought that up, maybe we should have a Form of Government Committee, right? And the reason is, we don't have necessarily a wildly engaged populace right now. And the question is, how do we get people more engaged in their town government? This is not going to be a committee about how do we remove the Select Board. It might be the best way that we govern this town. We just don't know the answers, and I think that's why I really want that transparency. I want the ability to kind of have sort of a transparent, prudent, and logical way to get this committee moving and getting people engaged to find out what they really is best for the town. I hope it's something that is similar to what we have, but, you know, I'm very open to figuring that out. I don't have a dog in the fight as far as a type of, type of form of government we should have. I honestly have no clue. I think it will require a lot of research. I think it will require a lot of give and take with the residents, and I think I can make that happen. And finally, I just want to say that, you know, this whole process isn't really that difficult. I don't blame anybody for not knowing that the Town Manager Act said that school committee members and finance committee members and Select Board members can't be on certain committees, right? Who's going to know that stuff? It's kind of minutia, right? But it's important to recognize that it happens, and, you know, I think an engaged resident such as myself saw it and wanted to make you aware of it, because I think it's important for us to all know that people make mistakes. We're all here to help each other and figure out what the best course of action is. So, just thank you for that. Hope you have time to think about it and consider the people and the way you're going to vote on this, I think is very important. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Costello. Board members, we'll be taking up the topic of what to do next with the Form of Government Study under Agenda Item 13. Item number six is a 7:05 PM public hearing to review an act on the common vitular license application of, I want to pronounce your name right, Uwal?
Ujwal.
Ujwal Raval, on behalf of 510, please come forward, 510 Boston Turnpike LLC, doing business as Jay Bhavani Shrewsbury, 504 through 512 Boston Turnpike. So, Mr. Raval, thank you for being here, and if you want to quickly introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Ujwal Raval, and I live in Shrewsbury from 2010, and this is the franchisee. Jay Bhavani is a franchisee, and today morning, luckily, today morning, they announced the 200th location, so mine will be 201st location. And they are across, like, you know, United States, Canada, Australia, everywhere is there. So, and it's street food, so I will bring to, like, you know, street food taste to Shrewsbury to, like, you know, you can try different food. And basically, like, me and my wife both, we are software engineers, we are working for a healthcare company, and that's my background. And she's my daughter.
Oh, great. Well, we're very excited. I think that, so your application is for hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay. When do you plan on opening?
Right now, like, construction is done. This week, we are trying to get that electric inspection, final inspection. So, final inspection is going to start. So, if you ask me, exact date, maybe two to three weeks. That's like tentative timeline.
Great. Board members, town staff has assured us that the applicant has provided all of the required materials. Are there any questions for Mr. Raval? This being a public hearing, are there any members of the public that wish to speak? If not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board approve the common vitral license application of Uwal Raval, on behalf of 510 Boston Turnpike LLC, DBA, Jay Bhavani Shrewsbury, 504 to 512 Boston Turnpike.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much for coming in and good luck to you.
Appreciate your time.
Item number seven is to review an act to sign the warrant for the October 22nd, 2025, special town meeting. Mr. Mizikar?
Yeah. Board members, I will walk you through the warrant. We're going to display the proposed warrant article language on the screen, so everyone can see it. I'll provide some comments on the content of the articles that will be considered. I do want to remind especially town meeting members, but anyone in the public, that the Finance Committee will hold a public hearing on the warrant on Thursday, October 9th, at 6:00 here in this room, in the selectman's meeting room. So, we do encourage everyone to attend. If nothing else, to hear the warrant one time and hear the discussion about what will be proposed at town meeting, and of course, ask any questions if you can. The Finance Committee at their meeting last week really encouraged members of the public and especially town meeting members to engage in that process for a better understanding and certainly support them in their endeavors to get more community engagement through their processes. So, I'll start with the warrant. The first item that is proposed for consideration is making adjustments to current budget, the fiscal year 2026 operating budget of the town. Of course, the operating budget is, you know, the main source of funding that we use across all town departments. We do have several changes that are proposed, and at the Finance Committee here, I'm going to take a step back and I'm going to walk through a variety of reasons why we have additional funding, where those funds come from. The vast majority of those funds this year at the Fall Special Town Meeting are coming from state aid, which is money that's transferred from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to local governments that can be used for a variety of things. Chapter 70 funding would use for education aid, and then unrestricted general government aid that can be used for anything. We got a benefit this year as well as the charges that we estimated that the state also, state gives us revenue and also makes some charges to cities and towns, so they withhold some of the funding. Those were lower by about $92,000 in comparison to what we anticipated, which was great news, because that just provides us with additional revenue, because we can reduce that expenditure. So, some of the key changes that we are proposing for the budget, the largest adjustment is with funding towards the pension system. So, Shrewsbury has its own pension system, and we are required, under the state rules and regulations, to satisfy our full funding liability by 2042. This is something that we had already achieved in 2021, but due to market conditions and a variety of other factors, including wage growth and employee growth, we're no longer fully funded, we're about 96% funding. So, this additional funding will help us achieve full funding on the current market conditions that we anticipate, based upon an actual aerial analysis in about six years. So, we're not getting as aggressive as we used to be with the pension, because we're keeping those resources available for other operating purposes, but we do need to make some adjustments there. We are going to make some transfers within departments. Board members, you all know the town meeting controls their appropriation authority at the salary and wage line items and the expense line items, and the bottom line of each and every department. So, in some instances where we have some vacancies in various departments, we're going to take the opportunity early in the fiscal year to transfer some of the salaries and wages out to other expenses, so we can provide services or accommodate and backfill positions with contractors. So, we're going to take that opportunity at the special town meeting. But again, the biggest change, $500,000, will be an increase proposed for the pension system funding. Nick, we can move on. So, adjusting the solid waste budget, this is something that we had talked about at the last meeting as well, when we reviewed the draft warrant. A lot of work has gone into looking at the existing budget. So, first and foremost, we're going to make a $160,000 reduction in the planned budget and the planned expenses for fiscal year '26, in order to reduce that budget gap that we have. That is only a portion of it, as we discussed, so we will be planning to use some of the available tax levy, the funding that's available to us now, to cover about $305,000 of the remaining shortfall in that budget. We will, and we will continue to analyze the shortfall. It's primarily tied to our bag sales and the revenues associated with it. They are not performing as they have in previous years. There was a significant decline within fiscal year '25, which put us kind of behind the eight ball and in a deficit situation as we closed out the prior fiscal year. We had some revenue assumptions for last fiscal year where we'd raise more revenue than we anticipated, and we're going to use those dollars and carry them forward through the retained earnings appropriation into the fiscal year '26 budget, so those funds aren't available. So, that was kind of like a double hit on the starting point for the fiscal year. And we're going to also just make adjustments to the revenue assumptions for this year based upon the bag sales that we've seen recently to make sure that we can accommodate the proposed expenditures. So, we're going to provide an analysis of the bag sales over the last few years and some insight into why we think they are declining, including increased recycling and other matters, not only at the Finance Committee, but also when we come back to you to discuss the actual motions and recommendations associated, your recommendations associated with each and every warrant article. So, I can just stop there if there may be any questions on the first two articles, if that's okay.
Mr. Mizikar? At the Finance Committee, there was discussion about the contract with Casella, and you gave a really good explanation about this isn't something that we can negotiate away with Casella, because the trucks on the road are the trucks on the road. And I was wondering if maybe you could kind of do this for the broader audience?
Sure.
Because I thought it was impactful, because I have heard some chatter in the community about, well, we should maybe go back and renegotiate if we're doing less trash, and it isn't based on the amount of trash, really. It's based on the size of the community.
That's right. So, there's two primary drivers, two primary cost centers or cost drivers within the solid waste budget. The first is Casella, and they are responsible for collecting the trash at the curb and hauling it to the waste incinerator. So, they have four trucks in town that are staffed every day, and they run, you know, as everyone knows, whatever day of the week they are, they run one route every week. So, you know, their workload is based on lane miles and curb miles and collections at all residents, and that, it's not tied to the amount of trash that they pick up at each and every location. That certainly plays a factor, but it's nominal as what we're seeing in total bag sales. We sell almost three-quarters of a million of bags each and every year that ultimately get collected at the curb. And so, you know, this, we're talking about a nominal shift in the total bags we're selling in the grand scheme of things. The second part of that cost is much more variable, and that is the tipping fee. It's a price per ton that we pay once that truck makes it to the incinerator and is weighed and then gets tipped into the incinerator to be burned. So, we will, and we have seen a slight reduction in that, although, you know, that cost goes up every year for inflation. So, those are the two primary cost centers. There's also recycling. We switched to single-stream recycling through the use of the blue toders that everyone was assigned. That is a wonderful benefit, right? You can put cardboard, you put commingled recyclable materials in that bin each and every week. It's more convenient to the resident. Remember, in the past, we'd have a cardboard week, and we'd have a commingled week, and you have to know which week it was. So, we eliminated that, but one of the challenges that we're facing with recycling is that our contamination levels are going up. That means the things that are being thrown in the blue bins, in, you know, in some cases in lieu of what would have went in the bag, is not actually recyclable, and it's costing us when we take that to the municipal recycling facility or the MRF. So, we have a combination of factors going on, on the cost side of things, that isn't working in our direction. We are strategizing, and we will be addressing all of those things to the best that we can over the coming weeks and months. I am concerned with our contamination rate and recycling, especially since we went to single stream, it has doubled. We're at about 6% contamination, now it's up to 12%. We know that, because we have a quarterly onsite audit that we perform at the recycling facility. Another one of those is coming up in the middle of next week, so we'll be interested to hear the results of that. But, so I want to stress to residents, it's not that we're, you know, trying to get more things into the blue bags, but there is a balance between what you throw in your recycling container and what's actually recyclable. It just doesn't go away. We actually get charged for that, and sometimes it would just be cheaper to the town in the long run if you threw the trash into your blue bags and your recycling, you kept to just recyclable. So, we're going to work on education campaigns on the recycling and other matters that we have under consideration, but that's really what's driving some cost changes year over year.
Can I make a follow-up? Follow-up question? So, if I understand correctly, when the recycle bins go to the recycling center and there are things that don't belong in the bins, that gets weighed and charged back to the town at a higher rate than if it went to, with the trash stream, it's a lower fee?
Yeah, in general, yes, because, you know, the recycling center has to get that to the trash incinerator one way or another, so, you know, it's a contamination rate that we're paying at the recycling center.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Article three is adjusting the capital budget, and we propose one additional item to be purchased, and that is ordering and purchasing and equipping an ambulance. So, we have talked over the past couple of years about our relationship with Worcester EMS Services and bringing an ambulance on through the fire department to make sure that we're meeting satisfactory and industry-standard response times, that we can further control our own destiny, as paramedics and emergency medical services have experienced significant staffing shortages and other challenges over the last few years. So, this is the purchasing and equipping of an ambulance. We are proposing $540,000 for the ambulance. This is all the costs that we'll need, including all equipment that we'll need for day one. We're doing this now in the fall of 2025, because there's about a 14-month lead time on the construction or the building of an ambulance, and we are targeting the first quarter of calendar year 2027 to begin emergency medical services through the fire department. We'll be able to provide the Finance Committee and the board and town meeting members a general, some general insight to how we're going to operate the EMS services, because I know people will say, let's not put the truck before the service, right? Let's make sure that we understand how we'll operate, so we can provide some insight to that. But again, this is for the acquisition of the truck. So, there's going to be three sources of funding. We put $250,000 into an apparatus purchase fund at the Springtown meeting, so we're going to immediately draw upon that, since those funds are available. And then, we're going to use round numbers, about another $150,000 in free cash, and then the balanced tax levy dollars that we'll have available to us. Again, that came in primarily through state aid, and that will cover the entire cost of it, so no borrowing, nothing like that, so it's a straight-out purchase of the ambulance. Article four is, you know, a financial housekeeping matter, where we're taking funding that we're receiving. receiving because we were part of a class-action opioid settlement process, and we're taking those funds that had previously been deposited into free cash before we got our special revenue fund set up. We're moving them from free cash and into this special fund so we can make sure that we use those for opioid and other substance-of-use prevention purposes. It's about $330,000. Article five is transferring money that we receive from the transportation network companies. Uber and Lyft rides that originate in Shrewsbury generate a five-cent per ride, excuse me, a 10-cent per ride fee that we receive, and there's about $30,000 from those rides that originated in Shrewsbury in calendar years 23 and 24 that we are proposing to put in to a fund that we use for the purpose of upgrading and maintaining sidewalks, crosswalks, and other pedestrian mobility initiatives. Then Article six is the payment of any bills that we have received from a prior fiscal year that requires a special appropriation from town meeting. We have no bills that we know of, and we don't anticipate receiving any for town meeting, but we'll have this as a placeholder just in case something comes up, since it requires town meeting action. Article seven is a citizen's petition that has been certified by the town clerk, so the lead petitioners have secured at least 100 signatures, and the, a purpose behind this article is to propose, "Town meeting consider authorizing the select board to submit special legislation to be considered at the state," which would require a referendum here in Shrewsbury of all voters to consider whether or not the public water supply should continue to be fluoridated. This is under an order of the Board of Health that it is fluoridated. So this option, if it passes and then passes at the general court, would compel a townwide referendum to be called, which would be binding upon the town, and if voters no longer wanted to have the water fluoridated, it would not be fluoridated for a period of up to five years. At that time, it would fall back to the purview of the Board of Health, and if the Board of Health voted to re-fluoridate the drinking water system, it would be subject, if called, by the appropriate number of residents, another townwide referendum, and voters would have. So if this passes, it will basically fall back to the hands of the voters to determine whether the drinking water system should continue to be fluoridated. Article eight is seeking an appropriation of funding to move into the next round of the Massachusetts School Building Authority's process to consider an addition and renovation of the Shrewsbury High School. So this would provide funding primarily to be expended on professional owners, project manager, architect, and related engineering companies to develop up to a schematic design or 25% of design level over the course of the next two years, an appropriate addition and renovation factors that are needed for the high school. And this process would be overseen by the High School Building Committee that was established by town meeting, and then members were voted much more recently. So the appropriation that's being requested for this is $3 million in total. It's split in half, one and a half million dollars be proposed, the use of free cash, and then one and a half million dollars from a borrowing authorization. Since the MSBA program is a grant program, and they fund roughly 50% of the total eligible costs that are associated with all phases of an MSBA project, we would likely never have to draw upon the borrowing authorization, because we'd be able to manage the cash flow of the $1.5 million, covering our portion while allowing the MSBA to reimburse us 50% of all costs for the cost of this initial stage. So again, it's a three and a half million dollar total cost. We don't have free cash certified yet. I talked to the accountant today, and she anticipates that we'll have something, if not by Friday, by early next week. We have estimated internally that we'll have about $12 million available for free cash, which is about a half million dollars less than we started last year with, but it's still noteworthy, because we spent about $7 million in free cash last year, and it'll all be basically replenished from a number of factors, including excess revenue and budget turnbacks from last fiscal year. So we definitely will still have a significant amount of free cash despite, you know, the various uses that we've proposed this evening, and we'll talk more about that in detail in the coming meetings. I think that's it, eight articles.
Just a quick question. Mr. Misakar, on the free cash balance, will it still be at policy level?
It will be, yes. So policy level is at least 5% of the operating budget, and we'll be well above that as we start the year. We need about, almost $8 million to be there, and we'll start with 12. And I don't know, it's hard to say with the exact numbers, but we should still be above $10 million once we leave town meeting.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? I'll attend a motion.
I move that we act to sign the warrant for the October 22nd, 2025 special town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight is to review and act on the application of Laura Carlson-Hydeman on behalf of Blazin' Wings Inc., DBA Buffalo Wild Wings 476 Boston Turnpike regarding a change of officers to its Section 12 All Alcohol Beverages license. And I believe Ms. Hydeman is with us virtually?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for joining us. If you want to just give us a quick overview of this application, and if you could indicate if there's any direct impacts to your Shrewsbury location?
We've had a few officers that have retired, so we are replacing. The new officers will be John Bowie, President, Eric Astron, Vice President, Mills Ockerson, Secretary, and Catherine Jasbon, CFO. They are replacing Lyle Tick as President, Jerry Pipes as Treasurer, and Robert Jones as VP. The day-to-day operations will remain the same. We did want to call out one thing within the application. When my team member had scanned this into the system, she had put the list of violations after Catherine Corey. It really should have been after page seven, and it's an attachment to the item six.
I will note that I did reach out to town staff to question whether or not we should be concerned about one person who had such a list of violations, and I was informed that that was, I believe, the list of violations for the entire company over a 10-year period, so that definitely put my mind at ease. So thank you for that clarification.
You are welcome. I am sorry about the confusion.
Not at all. Board members, the applicant has provided all of the required materials and not aware of any concerns from town staff, so do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Take a motion.
I move that we approve the application of Laura Carlstrom-Hydeman on behalf of Blazin' Wings Inc., DBA Buffalo Wild Wings 476 Boston Turnpike regarding a change of officers to its Section 12 All Alcohol Beverage license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much for joining us and giving us your overview.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Same to you. Item number nine is to review and act on the one-day common vitular license application of Micah Davis, Spirit of Shrewsbury, for the Fall Festival Expo on Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and for the Shrewsbury Parade and Food Trucks on Sunday, September 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. And my understanding is that this applicant has previously been approved by this board and is therefore not required to be in front of us.
Right.
Seems fairly straightforward, and if there aren't any concerns, questions, otherwise I'll...
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 10 is to review and act on the one-day beer and wine license application of Xander Garfinkel Wee Cocktails for a concert located at 378 Main Street on March 27th, 2026, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And again, Mr. Garfinkel is not required to attend, as he's been approved for a one-day license in the past without issue. Town staff has confirmed that we have received all the required application materials. However, the current insurance policy on file expires in January 2026, so it is recommended that our approval be made conditional upon receipt of updated insurance coverage prior to the event in March of 2026. So if there are no concerns or questions, take a motion.
I move the board approve the one-day All Alcohol License application of Wee Cocktails for the Barlow Concert at St. John's High School, 378 Main Street, on March 27th, 2026, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., contingent upon updated insurance coverage being provided prior to the event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11 is to review and act on the 13th Annual Turkey Trot for the Memory Road Race on November 27th, 2025, at 8:00 a.m. My understanding, Mr. Misakar, Mr. Baldinger, if you can confirm that, all town staff, police, fire, anyone that needs to opine on this, has been informed and approved?
That's correct.
Okay. It's an annual event, as it is the 13th annual, so take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12 is to review and act on the road closure request of Mark Fitzgerald, Apple Studios Inc., for a portion of Grafton Street in the area of 708 Grafton Street on October 8th, 2025, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I guess they're filming a movie called Cheesesteak. I wonder if they'll want some...
Working name, we're talking.
Cameos in the, yeah. Our DPW has reviewed the request and has no objections. Police details will be present to manage traffic flow during the closure. I will certainly be looking for any celebrities that might be starring in this movie, but is there anyone here that is...
I don't know if Mr. Gerald is here, is it?
There's somebody on the phone, and somebody named Sydney Sherrell that's dialed in.
Hi, Sydney here. I'm one of the assistant location managers on Cheesesteak.
Hi, Sydney.
Hi. So we are looking to do a soft closure at Grove Street on Grafton Street, allowing abutters access to their homes on the southbound lane, diverting traffic on to Grove Street, and then a hard closure at approximately 708 Grafton Street, where with the help of Shrewsbury Police, we would have our truck backing up and pulling forward to illustrate a traffic jam that we create. And then the northbound lane would be able to flow freely, and we're working with the, we're mainly filming at Flynn's Truck Stop, which is next door, and then we are also working with Imperial Worldwide for our other satellite trucks and staging.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Is there any flexibility on time? And here's why I ask. I am an abutter to this location. This is probably the absolute worst time of day that you could try to do this, and what I'm worried about is really the traffic on Route 20 already backs up to Lake Street normally, so having that specific area closed and with people looking to see what's going on, I worry that you're going to have traffic actually backing up past Grafton Street on Route 20, and I don't know, like, without addressing the Lake Street intersection, I really worry from 3:00 to 6:00, like, from 4:00 to 6:00 is horrible. So I do have some concerns over what that's going to do to the Route 20 traffic as well.
I can comment a little bit to that. So myself and Chief Anderson and Lieutenant Perna met with the team. We are assured that there'll be no, there'll be nothing on Route 20. Route 20 will flow freely normally. The filming will be actually on Grafton Street, and they will be, they will be able to allow traffic to come from Route 20 onto Grafton Street, but there may be parts during the filming where they will actually have to close Grafton Street so you can't approach. And so that's why they're asking for the road closure, because just in case, there may be periods of time when they do have to do that. Part of the reason for the timing, my understanding, is related to the daylight and this time of day. So, you know, between, but working with Chief Anderson and Lieutenant Perna, they felt it would be manageable, and of course, we're going to notify the fire department and the school department, so buses and all that stuff can get through. And then we also are assured that residents will be able to access their homes on that roadway, on both the Grove Street end and Route 20 itself. But they, they said there is no impact on Route 20. They have not looked for a permit from Mass DOT to do any work on that roadway. It's just strictly on Grafton Street.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I just, it's really the traffic, the normal traffic pattern on 20 is what I'm talking about. Even if you don't, you know, if you don't close 20, you're trying to, there's nothing encroaching on 20. I just, I would just like, I guess, is there a way from a traffic standpoint to at least have some monitoring around Lake? Because it is, as you know, if anybody drives around there, it does back up past Grafton Street at that time of day.
Yeah, I think that's something we can work with Chief Anderson on to make sure that that's addressed.
Okay.
Does anyone know if that's trash day in that neighborhood, that area?
It actually is.
It's Wednesday.
It is. It is trash day.
Just something to consider. It's trash day.
At least it is on one road up.
Yeah, I'm just not sure about that, a specific street.
When is our next meeting?
It's before they're filming. Our next meeting is on the 14th.
It is...
No, they said they're filming on the 8th.
They're filming on the 8th. Our next meeting is...
The 14th.
The 14th, I see. So it's after.
Yeah.
What is the pleasure of the board? Do we approve this with, you know, really asking you, Mr. Baldinger, to make sure that every effort is made to mitigate any traffic issues, and then certainly if we think that trash pickup is going to be impacted, that we either look at a contingency plan?
True. I can definitely work with DPW on the trash part of it and work with Chief Anderson on the traffic.
We can provide a report to the board in advance, and if there's any concerns, we'll address it through staff, if that's okay.
Are we comfortable with approving it with those contingencies?
Yeah, I think if we can get the Shrewsbury Police on the traffic flow on 20, if there's some additional ability to try to keep things moving, because I know people are going to be looking, they're going to know their phone, they're going to see lights, they're going to see this whole thing, and they're like, oh, look at this. And that's already an intersection that's had, especially that left turn there. That Flynn sign has probably got knocked over about 10 times from accidents. I mean, that's a very common area for accidents on that left turn right to Grafton, so if this was earlier in the day and I get the whole, I want the whole beautiful light of the sun setting and everything, I get it, but I just want to make sure that, I think there's going to be more issues than we're contemplating on this, that's all.
Sydney, I apologize, I missed your last name.
Sherrell.
Sherrell. I was going to say Ms. Sherrell. You vindicated 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Are you confident that you're not going to have to exceed that timeframe?
If that's the time parameters that were given, then yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. I think you've heard some of the concerns and feedback, so if you could please share that with your team?
Yes.
And just help us to avoid any, you know, inconvenience or disruption to residents?
Absolutely.
Hey, guys, Mark Fitzgerald, can you hear me now?
Oh, who is that?
I can hear you.
Oh, it's Mr. Fitzgerald. Hello.
Guys, I am so sorry. I've been having technical difficulties here. I apologize. I missed out on most of the conversation, so I apologize. I heard there were issues about the traffic, and again, I'm not sure what Sydney has said, which I'm sure is the correct answer, but we are not looking to mess with any traffic out on Route 20. out on Route twenty. And if people wanna come in to Grafton northbound, that that is accessible as well. Uh, if you can explain to me what the issues are, I can try and try and resolve them and answer any questions. I apologize for the bad communication.
Sure. I I, this is Greg Richards. I'll I'll explain him because I am in a butter. At first thing, too, just real quick, are the butters being notified productively? Is there like a butter notification?
Well, we were waiting, we were waiting for the town to approve it before we had more stuff begun and start firing.
Okay, but you are going to. That's okay. Okay. Um, so my biggest issue, and it's not, yeah, my issue is it's not about um, the traffic, blocking traffic on Route twenty. It's that during that time of day, traffic will back up from Lake Street, which is the next road headed towards Worcester, all the way back past Grafton, because I live right around there. And that intersection that you're gonna be filming at, there'll be traffic on Route twenty stopped normally between, let's say, four and six o'clock almost every day. So by adding just visually, people are gonna be able to see what's going on. There could be some additional concerns I have over traffic flow on Route twenty, people being stuck in that intersection and so forth and so on. So it's really the time of day that you're doing it is my biggest issue um, because of the rush hour traffic being a weekday. If that could be earlier, but I know you wanna get golden hour and all that stuff, so I would just be cognizant of that there is natural traffic backup on twenty past where you'll be filming.
Well, I'll tell you what, here's what I think, and I hope this may help to resolve it, is we are working with the Shrewsbury Police. If the chief feels like he needs more officers to pull the traffic through, and if something comes up and it gets very blocked up, we will stand down and bleed all the traffic through and, you know, open it up. We're not gonna keep going if there's a mile of traffic. If the chief tells us to stand down for fifteen minutes while he bleeds the traffic, we will stand down and let him bleed everybody through.
Just wanna make sure we have enough officers there. That's really the key.
Yep.
Well, I'm gonna leave that to the chief. If he feels like it's five, it's five. If he feels like he needs seven, it's seven. Whatever whatever the chief recommends, we will go with, I assure you.
Okay. It is trash day. Don't forget. It is trash day, yeah. Okay, I, um, again, I'll just leave it that Mister Baldinger work with.
And just one other thing I wanted to say is, once this does, we didn't wanna go and fire the neighbors as if, you know, we didn't wanna be presumptuous as if this was approved already. We're waiting for approval, and then we will reach out and we do this all the time. Somebody's got a refrigerated delivery or meals on wheels and whatever needs to happen, we are very happy to deal with every resident and every situation they have to make sure that that their day-to-day is not is not disrupted.
How wide of a net, how wide of a net of butters do they?
I think it went all the way up to Grove, so it'd be like Hickory Crimson and Grove.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be significant, and we'll create a butters list for them.
In Grafton.
We can also, if this helps too, we can get some message boards going earlier in the week and try to get the word out to help alleviate any traffic situations. I'd be more than happy to get a message board at every pinch point, which I believe is three, but you guys can correct me, you know your town better than I do. But I'd be happy to put up message boards, getting the word out as early as three or four days ahead of time, just so people are aware and can act accordingly and help, you know, to alleviate it that way. We do that, you know, that's required sometimes depending on what we're doing, so I'd be very happy to do that as well.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question on your filming? Are you using any drones or is it all just ground cameras?
There is a drone, but that is not for this shot. That's for a later shot, and that will only be over Flynn's Truck Stop. It will not be over Route twenty. It will not be over Grafton Street. Um, it's not for this shot that we're talking about. It's for a shot later in the night.
Okay.
And again, it will not go over live traffic. It's just gonna hover over the, it's gonna go up, you know, maybe a hundred and fifty feet or so and and get a shot looking down.
Perhaps when this is nominated for an Oscar, we'll appreciate the recognition.
Well, I'll tell you, I've worked, this is my sixth Mark Wahlberg movie, and if he was ever gonna get nominated, this is the one, I promise you.
Is it, is there a?
It's a great story. It's a great story. Uh, Mark plays a long-haul trucker, and his son has autism, and they do a bunch of road trips to Bond to go to all of the N B A arenas. Uh, Mark and his family are Celtics fans, and uh, his wife's family are Knicks fans, so uh, when the son turns twelve, he's gotta make a decision. And he needs to go to all arenas to do the math, so to speak. So it's kind of a great, heartwarming family story that I'm sure, I guarantee that you all will be proud of when it comes out.
One one question. Is, if there's, are you filming Rain or Shine, or is there like a weather date? Do you need it to be?
No, this is, this is happening. This is happening. These scenes could could be done in the rain. Uh, there is no, there is no Plan B, so to speak, because we're going forward.
Okay. We appreciate town staff, um, doing everything possible to ensure that there's minimal disruption to residents, so.
Again, I'm happy to get message forwards and whatever, you know, we've done that in the past, and it's helped out when people know in advance, you know.
Appreciate Mister Fitzgerald, your your willingness to to help us here, and we'll rely on um, town staff to ensure that they work closely with you if if they ultimately decide that those tactics should be should be used. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I move the board approve the road closure request of Mark Fitzgerald on behalf of Apple Studios, Inc. for a portion of Grafton Street in the area of seven oh eight Grafton Street on October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five from three P M. to six P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, board. Everybody have a great night. I appreciate your time, and I'll work closely with uh, Keith and the town manager and the chief of police, D P W., and and get this done properly, I assure you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Item number thirteen is to review an actual point one member to the Form of Government Study Committee. Um, as discussed at our last meeting, and as Mister Costello pointed out earlier, one person appointed by this board to the Form of Government Study Committee is ineligible um, due to being an elected school committee member, which is prohibited under section five of the Town Manager Act. Um, I do apologize to the applicants and the broader community for this oversight. In preparing for tonight's board meeting, I instructed town staff to put this item on our agenda so we could decide how to proceed. I will first recognize that there is the option to amend the committee charge, for example, to include one member of the school committee. So before we discuss anything else, are there any board members who feel we should amend the current committee charge? Okay. So in anticipating, in anticipation of us needing to fill the vacancy, I asked the town manager to share a spreadsheet with the remaining applicants so board members could indicate their preference. This is a process that we've used whenever there are more applicants than openings. So I do want to note that the spreadsheet is an aid for meeting efficiency and to help us narrow candidates and guide discussion. It is not an official vote. The only decisions that count are those that are made here through our public discussion, motions, and formal votes. Board members may, of course, adjust their views before casting their official vote. My position is that the other nine committee members were validly appointed and sworn in. The only issue is that one appointee was deemed ineligible, and I therefore consider the appropriate next step to be a new vote for this single seat. You know, Mister Costello asserted that he was next in line or received the next higher number of votes while he was tied for tenth place on the preliminary rankings worksheet. As I said, that document was a tool and carries no binding authority. And in fact, during our meeting, there was a formal motion made to appoint Mister Costello, which did not pass. So four out of five board members provided their next choice for this vacancy through our spreadsheet process, which we would typically use for discussion. But before I share that, um, I want to open it up to others for discussion.
May I say, so, um, my only concern with this is we did not use um, a form of like, you know, one-for-one voting. It was not like a straight ballot where we voted, you know, one vote equals one vote. We did a weighted ballot. So, um, in my particular case, Ms. Fritz was my first vote, which meant that she got ten points, and that was how we sort of had done that. But if we're making her ineligible to serve on this committee, then it sort of throws off all of the the voting for that, because now the member that I had given my, you know, strongest vote to is now no longer on the list. And so I have concern, you know, that we have nine other members who have now sworn in to serve on this committee, but, um, I, you know, I I feel like at the very least, we should recalculate if we're removing a member um, or removing an applicant as out of the eligibility that we should recalculate. Um, I also, you know, have some concern. I think that when we had decided to use this method of voting, we moved forward with, you know, trust in our colleagues that we were going to vote for ten members out of the twenty applicants, and that was not done by all members, which throws off the calculation. It really, um, and I I think that that was sort of disingenuous um, to the community. So I have some concerns about how the voting was done, and if we're now removing somebody from eligibility and just moving forward with, you know, sort of the next person on the list. I think it's unfair to, um, to all of the applicants to do it that way.
I I think we're saying the same thing, but different ways. I think that our we we use this ranking, but again, it's the vote takes place here. So even if I voted for someone on that sheet and I get into the meeting and I might be like, oh, I've changed my mind. I wanna vote for someone. So like, we used it to sort of inform, you know, you had twenty applicants for ten seats. And so rather than sort of going one by one by one and five people and who wants this, it was sort of a, how do we organize it? How do we narrow it? Okay, here's sort of what that was. Let's talk about it. Does somebody have a different choice? You know, if you have a different choice, make a motion for a different choice. So to me, it's it's, it doesn't, it it helps inform the process, but it is not the process. So it's not like we we vote in a spreadsheet and that translates into a vote into a meeting. Anything can change in the meeting. So to me, the spreadsheets are kind of irrelevant, other than just just trying to help us from an efficiency perspective. How do we narrow this down in a in a fair and unbiased way? So I don't see any reason, as I said, the nine other people were validly appointed, and and they have been sworn in. There's, I I don't see any reason why we would say to them because one person was deemed ineligible, you're all ineligible, and we have to start over. Um, so.
Well, can I make a comment on that? Because the timing on the swearing-in, I think, is important. I mean, Mister Costello notified the board the day after. There was plenty of time. If if he was, could have resolved, remedied the fact that a violation was brought to the board's attention, nobody should have been sworn in. Because as Ms. Conlin said, which I agree with, there there was a weighted vote. In this particular case, that spreadsheet one hundred percent was used in the voting because of a weighted vote. That was how it was. It wasn't, you didn't just pick, here's ten people, as she mentioned. It was a weighted vote. So by changing the rules after the fact, I had a lot of problems with that. And even answer or address her question, the there was never rules that said you had to vote for everybody. If you you can vote for the people you feel are passionately about that are gonna make the biggest impact to a committee, just like if you go to a voting booth, you don't have to vote for everybody on your ballot. You vote for those who you're passionate about, or you feel are gonna do the best job. So in this particular case, I a hundred percent believe we're changing the way by having a separate appointment of nine people when the first vote had a completely different set of set of rules around it. And just because they were sworn in, as I mentioned, it was notified the day after the vote. That could have got remedied before everybody else was sworn in.
Mister Richards, these people were each individually chosen. They weren't chosen as a group or a pack, so I I disagree that the other nine people, that their appointment should be impacted because one person was ineligible. And you, you know, you're right. We did use a process, again, to narrow the applicants. But that is not, there weren't rules around it. There wasn't a rule that you had to vote based on how that shook out. I mean, you of all people know, nothing is a vote until it's it's here in a public setting. And you vote, and you voted for those nine people as well.
No, I'm I'm not saying they're ineligible. I'm just saying that they, if it did throw off because of the weighting of the vote, you're you're totally minimizing the fact that, as Ms. Conlin stated, her number-one vote-getter was a stronger vote than everyone else. She, her vote was diluted because that person was ineligible based off all the other candidates. Because of the process that was chosen, that was a process. And I've never seen a process where we come up here and we say, oh, how how on earth would we have appointed taking those twenty people in this meeting if the spreadsheet didn't mean anything? I don't understand that at all.
I didn't say it didn't mean anything. Again, it's a it's a tool in the process. But it is not, it is not the final decision. It is not that we had everybody independently, you know, rank their preferences to sort of, you know, distill and narrow the list. There was no, there was no reason why that couldn't change. I mean, there are meetings when people have deliberation and then make a motion, which could be different. So I disagree that because one person was deemed ineligible, that that impacts the other nine people who this board independently selected.
Well, that's not the process we use. I I I just vehemently disagree with that. I mean, it's it's just not accurate.
I think part of what I'm hearing is there are twenty-three points that would have gone elsewhere had we eliminated the ineligible person at the beginning. So I think what we have to determine is what's the remedy that we would like to take as a board so that we can evaluate each candidate in in a way that we wouldn't have, right? I mean, it changes. Taking one person out takes, it changes the distribution. So what you said about recalculating, I think that's what you're trying to get at.
Yeah, I I just think it's it's, you know, I think going into this, um, personally, I I thought, you know, that I had trust in my colleagues that we were going to each vote for ten candidates. That was the instruction that we were given, was to vote for ten candidates. Um, and each vote, you know, depending on how we rank them, have a certain weight that is carried with them. And when not all of us choose to move forward, um, you know, and and vote for ten candidates, I think that that is, it's it's sort of a disingenuous way to do this. I think it is unfair to the community um, that 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 was chosen because I think that they are, that, you know, unfairly gives more weight to the three people that were voted for as opposed to voting for ten candidates as we were instructed to do. Um, and I think that to to remove the eligibility of one candidate that had, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but I know they had multiple members of this board had voted for them. I think you said twenty.
It was twenty-three points.
Twenty-three points, you know, that it to just move forward with, you know, with this, to to, you know, the suggestion to go forward and say that the next, the vote should go to the next person on the list is not fair. I don't think that the process was done honestly. Excuse me, there's a lot of conversation in the crowd. It's kind of distracting. This is not a public hearing. Um, so I I think it is, it's unfair to the community, the way that it was done. Um, that it was not, it was not sort of done honestly by all members of the board, I feel, and I feel like moving forward by just appointing the next person is not correct, the correct way to do it. And I think that if anything, um, you know, if we vote tonight on the ten remaining members, um, that's one way to do it, but I I think that, you know, I don't know if we should, we should go forward and recalculate the votes um, with the ineligible member removed from the list, which would give each member in our member removed from the list, which would give each member an opportunity, one more opportunity to vote.
just hypothetically speaking, even if you were to do that, right, and say the list, it came out and it was Joe Smith is sort of next in line, it's still subject to a motion and a vote by this board. So I don't feel like we need to go through that convoluted. I guess maybe the question is, do we all agree that we have one vacant seat, so we need to vote for one member? I disagree that we should blow up the whole, you know, the nine other people that we appointed because, again, they weren't primarily, they weren't exclusively appointed because of this voting process. And, and, you know, everybody wants transparency. And so we try to, how do I put this? Not always deliberate, like individuals, like, in my opinion, we had 20 applicants and I'm great with all 20 of them. And it's really uncomfortable because when we're voting, it's almost, I don't want to imply that one person is not as good as another. I mean, you could take any of the 20, and I think we'd all be great with it. So it's really, you know, so part of this is just trying to be respectful of people and not, you know, come up with reasons why this person, but not that person. You know, we did ask as part of the process, each individual board member to vote for 10 people. The, you know, let's just be clear, Michelle, with what you're, you're saying, four out of five board members voted for 10. Brian voted for three. Greg, sorry, voted for three. And it was to tilt the weighted outcome. And it wasn't in good faith, but it was, you're right to do that, whether we agree with it or we disagree with it. But, you know, to your point, if you go to the next person in line, you could say, well, they had 10 points, but only one out of five board members voted for them. I think we're getting caught up on this, this ranking, which is not, and maybe we just need to rethink it going forward so we don't repeat this issue. The, the, the pre-meeting voting and ranking is not binding, period, hands down. So therefore, I don't think we revert to that to select the next person. I think that even if those, you know, I come to the meeting and I'm like, this person got the most and this person got the least, someone might say like, this person didn't get any votes and I want them to be considered. And the board ultimately votes on that. And then that doesn't tie back to the pre-meeting rankings either. So I think we're just putting a little too much emphasis on that, which was supposed to be just a good faith tool to help us get organized around something that otherwise would kind of be.
It's cumbersome.
It would just be disorganized and lengthy. So my opinion is that we need to vote for one other member. How we do that, I'm, I'm open to. We can do it tonight. We can pen it to the next meeting. Are there any issues with pending it to the next meeting? Does the committee need to meet? I don't know when their next meeting is.
Yeah, we haven't scheduled, the committee has not scheduled a meeting yet.
The only thing is, in the charge, you know, I think we would just need to make it clear to the committee that we're expecting their deliverable and that their timer starts when they have their first meeting, not like several weeks ago.
Man, I just have an argument about the, I don't deem this a vacancy. I think the term vacancy is incorrect in this case because the committees never met. And I understand what you're saying about that there's a non-binding, say, pre-vote, but that's the way that this board has voted on all appointments. That same process has been filed for quite a while, at least all the appointments since I've been here. I know I've been here very long, but that's the method that's always been used. Filling out a spreadsheet ahead of time, coming here, and nobody's ever, to my knowledge, offered up alternate appointments during a meeting saying that that was just a suggestion. So I, I just don't believe that they're really, should be looked at as a vacancy. If anything, if you're not going to go to the next person from the previous vote, honestly, it should be revoked because you could make a different decision.
There wasn't, there wasn't a vote. You're referring to a vote. There wasn't a prior vote. There's not another person to go to, Greg. I'm sorry, but there wasn't. I mean.
You're also replacing, you're trying to, you know, if you go to the next person, that person got 10 points, whereas the person we're removing got 23. And I think that's the point that Ms. Conlin is trying to make.
Oh, I agree with what she's trying to make.
So how do you fix that, I guess, is, is the question.
Well, you can't recalculate it because you could have made a different decision. She's would pick, obviously, Ms. Conlin would pick somebody different, and then all the other scoring would be different. Everything would have been.
And I think all, all four of the members who gave points to the person that's no longer eligible would assign those points elsewhere. So.
To the remaining.
To the remaining.
Nine.
Nine, yes.
These, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't really care if we call it a vacancy or what. It is, there's 10 seats, 10 positions. We appointed nine. I think those people were appointed fairly. And so there's still one position that needs to be appointed.
So take your points and put them someplace else because otherwise, these make my head hurt when I have to think of this many people and all the different points.
Yeah, I just don't think it was a good system to begin with. I mean, I would argue that if this ever came up again, we should come up with a completely different way to do it because.
Yeah.
This isn't working.
Well, it has worked.
It has worked when we all do it in good faith. But when it's not done in good faith.
You keep saying good faith, Michelle, but that, nobody said you had to vote for all 10 people. It explicitly does not say you must vote.
Do you think that's fair to the community?
Yes, it's fair. 100% it's fair. You know why it's fair? Because the only way certain people are ever going to get on committees, if you have to look at picking them. I tried, never got appointed. There's a number of people in this community who have always said, I'll never get appointed because of who I am, what I believe in. The fairest thing to this community is to allow somebody who thinks differently than those sitting up here to sit on a committee. That's what's really going on here.
I think that we, the nine that we selected, that's, that have sworn into this office are all a very diverse group of people. And so to say that we're selecting people who only think a certain way is incredibly untrue. And I think the, the choice to go forward and only select three people, when we were instructed to select 10, is unfair to the community. All five of us were duly elected by members of this community to make these decisions. So you are one of five. And we go into this trusting each other with the process that we had discussed and go into this trusting each other to do this fairly and to, to, to throw the vote by only selecting three out of 10, I think is incredibly unfair to all members of the community.
It's not throwing the vote.
I don't serve a handful of people who have a loud voice. I serve every person that lives in this community.
Yeah, so do I.
And that means that I voted for 10 people. And I voted for a very diverse group of people. And the ones who were sworn in have very different perspectives and different, you know, priorities and things that they want to see in this community. And I think that that is the only fair way to do this. So to, to throw a weighted vote by only using three of your votes is not, it is not honest and it is not transparent and it is not fair to the community.
It's 100% fair and.
I disagree.
Well, you can disagree, but the fact that you're saying that it's throwing, that I have nothing against anybody.
Why did you only choose three then? If you were not trying to skew the vote?
I wanted, I'm voting for the people who I know, number one, have never been able to serve on a committee.
They, that is not true.
Oh, that is true. And, and that those are the people who I felt were going to be a diverse voice on the committee that I was the most passionate about. Because I knew there was four other members of this committee who were going to vote for other people. So that's why I chose to vote for those people. And just like I said, when I go into the ballot box and I vote on everything, you don't have to vote for everybody. You can leave things blank if you're not passionate about somebody. So to say that you must vote is wrong. That's just not how, that's not how it went.
Right. And I think that that, if I could just interrupt, I, I think that that works in the ballot box because it's one to one. And I think what we're hanging up here is the fact that these were weighted. So we've got 23 points that didn't, that got allocated to someone who's ineligible. So how do we move forward in a way that doesn't just throw those points away, I think is what we're trying to get at.
Yeah, the only way you can do it is go back and revote everybody. That's the only way you can do it.
I stand by what I said. First of all, Mr. Richards, you have no idea how I've ever voted. I went through and looked at the spreadsheet. You might like to sort of apply this group think to us, but I don't appreciate that. I don't have a record of not considering people who have different points of view. And I stand by what I said, that I think all 20 of the applicants are, you know, I appreciate them coming forward and I think they would all be excellent. But please don't pit us against each other just because we didn't pick someone that, that you have a preference for. There were people that I voted for that other people didn't vote for. Okay. And I'm not going to get up here and accuse others of having intent behind that. I mean, I, I really think that sometimes if you look, you're making something out of this that does not exist. And I don't appreciate that. I'm going to go back to where I stood. I think that we have one open position. And I think we should vote based on the current applicants, who should have that position. I do not agree with, I can't find any reasonable justification to go back and recalculate everything. So I would ask the board members to agree if we're going to vote for another person or not.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to, I just want to make a comment. There's a lot of passion in this room. And I just want to remind everyone who's watching and also us that there were 20 applicants to, who applied for this form of government study, which is going to be an extensive process. That's going to take 12 to 18 months of public engagement. So there's going to be a lot of community interaction. And each of the applicants, the ones who applied, the ones who are on the committee, and also the ones who are not, I hope and expect that they will continue to be involved with this process. And even ones who also did not apply, who may express interest in our form of government, that's what the committee is going to do, is going to collect the feedback from the community and make the recommendations that at the end of the process will be what the select board will then work through. But I think, you know, again, I feel and understand that there's a lot of passion in this room. But I think that we just need to remind ourselves that all of these people who applied and all of us are community members and want to see the best outcomes for this community. And for there to be, you know, us to be fighting over the last seat, I just feel, you know, just reminding us, ourselves that each person who applied, each person who watches our meetings, each of us on this, on this board, want what's best for our community. And I will say in, for full transparency, when I received the, the new spreadsheet over the weekend, I looked at the old spreadsheet and I looked at the people that I voted for who may or may not have gotten appointed. And I went with my top choice of the remaining applicants. And I think that that's what we should do for this. Again, I, I know that there is a lot of passion. And this process is going to take a long time. But no voice is going to be turned away. The, the committee will meet in public settings. People will come to those meetings and I hope that they, and expect that they will provide public comment. So those are just my thoughts on this.
So what do you want to do?
I would like to fill the vacancy.
Brian Costello.
Yeah. I don't know. People who accuse me of breaking the law and being an entrenched bureaucrat are interesting considerations.
So you're going to revote for the one?
We are not, this is not a public hearing. I apologize. I appreciate the engagement, but I have to follow the protocol of the meeting or I'll be accused of breaking that law as well. I will entertain a motion to review an act to appoint one member of the board. I think that we should take a vote to clarify the process and then we can decide if we want to vote today or if we want to wait for our next meeting.
I think that given that the, the votes were not one to one, when I looked at the voting spreadsheet, I also went back to the person, there was only, of the people that I voted for and the top vote getter for me. And I was planning to support that person as my choice this evening. So I thought that that was consistent with, you know, how I had approached the voting spreadsheet from the outset. And so I do think because it's weighted, I think you create more issues if you revote the whole thing, because then there could be people who two weeks ago got appointed to a committee and they're really looking forward to it and they got sworn in and they're ready to go to work. And then all of a sudden, the rug could be pulled out from under them. And I, I just think that that's a really unfortunate thing to do to someone who's put their name forward. Everybody put their name forward in good faith. We want people to apply for positions such as this and other positions. And if it's a circus, then people aren't going to want to apply for these types of things. This committee has really important work to do. And the members of the committee, while they are instrumental to the final recommendation, what they hear from the community and the feedback that they receive is what's going to guide and drive their work and their presentation to us at the end of the 12 to 18 months. And I think that getting the, getting the ball rolling and getting the committee off and onto their important work is foremost. So I would not recommend tabling this until next month. I think we should look at the nine remaining candidates and choose one.
I'm sorry, I keep saying 10, but you're right. There's nine.
Is there nine? Is it?
I don't know. This makes my head hurt.
There were 20, took one out, we appointed 10. You're right, there's nine. And just to be very clear.
There's 10.
There's 10?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, we had 20 initially.
There's 11 total on the committee. You have appointed 10. There's one remaining.
Okay.
This one was ineligible.
Sorry. It's on the agenda, isn't it?
Regardless, yes, regardless, yes. Review an act to appoint 10 members.
79, 10. Okay. Yep. For anyone who thinks that any of this was predetermined, let me assure you.
Let me count the number. So just as a point of order, do we need to revoke the other ones too?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right. Well, at this point, I think that the best way to do it is just to go around the table and each person can indicate who they would like to vote for. And we'll see if we have any consistency.
Brian Costello.
Deborah Delgado.
John Finn.
John Finn.
John Finn.
So we have three for John Finn, one for Brian Costello, and one for.
Deborah Delgado.
Deborah, Deborah Delgado, Delgado, sorry. All right. Make some motions.
I move that we appoint John Finn to the Form of Government Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's aye? Michelle Carlos?
Well, I'm going to aye because in the past, it's like, I get on board with, if we're making an appointment to this committee.
Okay. So the motion passes four to one to appoint John Finn to the Form of Government Study Committee.
And abstentions.
Pardon me?
I said you should call for nays and abstentions, just to be clear.
Okay. Would you like to?
I will vote?
No, no, no. I've only heard you call for.
Oh, nay. I'm sorry.
Anybody opposed?
I just assumed, but I, is there a nay vote?
No.
One. Okay. Mr. Richards, would you like to make another motion? I mean, I think that that.
You just appointed somebody. How would I, how would I make?
Okay. Any other discussion on this matter? That leaves us with correspondence. I don't number 14 is an email dated September 10th from Sam Malouf, 57 Harriet Avenue regarding stopping water fluoridation is a priority. So noted. Letter dated September 11th, 2025 from. Letter dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-five from Shonda Green, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable regarding cable TV and license with Selco. This is generally an administrative issue, or notice, I should say, so noted. Email dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five from Brian Costello, three ninety-eight Walnut Street regarding public comments. Mr. Costello was here this evening. And item number seventeen is a letter dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five from Diane Scott, Massachusetts State Lottery Commission regarding a keynote license for Dean Park Grill and Pizza, seven forty-nine Main Street. Apparently, if the board does not take action within twenty-five, twenty-one days, the application will default to approval. So it would be if the board wanted to stand in the way of, of this license. So if any board member has a desire to do that, then, you know, please let me or Mr. Mizakar know so that we can put it on the agenda for a future meeting. And that concludes our agenda. If there's anything else, not anything else, I will entertain a motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Meeting is adjourned.